What's his?
That picture that Harvest took of the...
Oh, okay. It's the same ones, or?
Two different ones.
I'd like to call this meeting to order, the board meeting. I have roll call. No, I'm sorry. Stand up for the pledge of allegiance, please. And a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
Thank you. Monica, can I have roll call, please?
Doctor Hyde?
He's excused.
Mr. Moreno?
Here.
Mrs. Quintana?
Here.
Mr. Rola?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
May I have a motion for the approval of the minutes for November 27th, 2018?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the meeting minutes of November 27th, 2018.
May I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? CNN, roll call, Monica.
Mr. Moreno?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
May I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda.
May I have a second?
Madam Chair, I second the agenda.
Discussion? CNN, Monica, roll call.
Mr. Moreno?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Next, we are, may I have, we're gonna have recognitions and celebrations with Dr. Abrego.
Yes, thank you. We do have three recognitions. Our first recognition is from Hanson School. We'd like to have Ms. Rocio Rocha. I believe you're gonna recognize some parents?
My name is Rocio Rocha. I have some parents, they come with me tonight for recognizing my principal, Mr. Todd Wynn.
Come up. Do they wanna come up? Are they here?
Yes.
Well, let's sit back there.
The parents from Hanson?
Yeah.
Come on up.
Please come up?
Parents and teachers.
I can say that. Do they wanna say anything?
Hi.
She can say it in Spanish if she wants. And we can have Guadalupe? We can have Guadalupe and translate it.
Um, I'd like to... I'd like to... Recognize Mr. Wynn? Because he's been a good principal at the school and we've seen a lot of, a lot of different things from last year, a lot of progress. I, I seen that my son have progressed in his grades since last year and he's been on top of the kids. In the mornings, he's outside. And when the kids leave, he's outside with the kids. And, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Denise Lucero and I'm the House Clerk at Hanson. And I'm new to the district, it's my second year here. I've seen a lot of change in the culture at our school because of Mr. Wynn. Like they say, he is outside in the mornings, every morning greeting all the kids and parents. And I think that makes a huge difference.
What's his name again?
Todd Wynn.
Todd Wynn.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
If, would you please, if you're done, if you take a...
Stand up here.
Everyone stand in the front. We'd like to take a picture with you and congratulate you. Unless someone else wants to speak?
Anybody else wanna say anything?
I didn't know Todd was here. We were looking for you.
Board, I am Todd Wynn at Hanson. I appreciate the recognition by all of our parents. I don't take this by myself. We have a strong team that surrounds me. So Ms. Stokely's showing me the way and I couldn't do it without our front office and our parents and teachers. We have great kids, too, so that helps.
Of course.
But thank you very much.
Come up here.
Are you guys ready now?
I didn't have a week in. Dr. Jane. Dr. Jane. You have a group of five recognitions tonight.
If everyone could please move just a little bit toward the center, please. A little more, a little closer, a little closer to the center. Show them out, Hanson. Three, one, two, three. Thank you.
Are there any more?
Yes, we, we have, we have more than one today. So our second one is going to be from Dawn Minard. She is the Principal of Alsup. And I believe you're gonna recognize two of your programs. Am I correct, Wellness? And is it the PIE or P-I-E? PIE, there you go.
So, good evening, Board President Quintana, distinguished members of the board, and Superintendent Abrego. My name is Dawn Minard and I'm the proud Principal of Alsup Elementary. And I am here tonight to recognize a couple of outstanding people of our community. So, we all know the saying that it takes a village. And I must say that I am lucky enough to have an amazing village of parents, staff, and community members that support Alsup and shining bright like diamonds. This past October, we held our eighth annual Fall Festival. The planning for this annual event begins at the very start of the school year and the outcome is always one to enjoy. This year, we had over 1,100 people in attendance. Our community was able to enjoy a trunk-or-treat lane, a haunted house, a photo booth, face painting, and of course, of course, food. This would have not been possible if it wasn't for the wonderful group of parents and community members that have put in hours of work. I cannot begin to express how much I appreciate each one of you that I will call up here in a second. Thank you for volunteering your time to help make Alsup a better place. It is bittersweet to know that the majority of you will not be with us next year as your students transition onto middle school. However, I'm honored that I have... Sorry, can't see. I've had the chance to get to know each one of you. So please help me in recognizing the awesome members of the Alsup PIE team. So I have Regina Hurtado, Hector Lobo, Melinda Rios, Nicole Long, Josephine Grant, Lauren Ramirez, Diana Romero, Deanna Reese, Nancy Smith, Felix Romero, and Sabrina Cherino. So if you guys are here, please come on up. Did you guys want to do that one first?
Yeah, great.
Okay.
I'll give these to you so you can have...
You wanna go down?
Do you want me to say something?
Okay.
You want staff to be kept separate?
Do they wanna have words? Please?
Okay, I will. I have been pretty grateful for my time at Alsup and it's come to an end this year as my last child is now in fifth grade. But lucky for Tom, we'll be there. I would just like to say thanks to Dawn for always being, creating such a warm and welcoming environment and always inviting us in.
All right, so I have one more recognition. And I would also like to take a moment tonight to recognize our amazing Alsup PE teacher. Emily Woodward has been with us for the last four years as our physical education teacher. And we have been lucky enough to learn from all the great things that she's brought to Alsup. Emily's a staff member that I know I can always count on to give 100% to her students, her teammates, her colleagues, and her family. Emily's professional goal this year is to increase opportunities for wellness activities outside the PE classes. It was a goal of mine to host an effective wellness day in which Ms. Woodward would be able to plan a day full of movement, wellness, and nutrition education to her heart's desire. Ms. Woodward, along with her colleagues on our PDIS team, did just that. And on November 20th, our entire school participated in the first Alsup Wellness Day, complete with school-wide zumba to begin the day and a turkey trot to end the day.
That's a lot.
This effort shows just how dedicated to her craft she is and how she does not let the physical education be bounded by the walls of the classroom, but rather spreads the knowledge and learning experience throughout our school. So thank you to Ms. Woodward for being an important asset to Alsup.
Do you have any words?
Um, yes. I, I love what I do. This is my 12th year teaching PE and I'm so blessed that I landed at Alsup. And I have a fearless leader that believes in me and allows me to try some out-of-the-box ideas to really pursue what I'm passionate about. And she helps me to grow in my field because as educators, we should always be learning and growing. And so I'm just thankful that I have a school that believes in me and they go with me when I'm ready to try different things. So I'm just blessed to be part of the Alsup community and look forward to other great moments there, so.
Is your spouse here?
Yes.
He can take a picture with you.
Sean. Good, yes, we're not done. We're recognizing today. So the more, the merrier. We have another recognition. And this is gonna be from Ms. Tanya Lopez. She is the Director of Culture, Living with Diverse Education. Tanya, would you please come up?
My god, I didn't even see her.
Good evening. This past fall, the coordinators from the Culturally Linguistically Diverse Education Department have been leading groups of teachers in ELD and by literacy to think about what that education looks like in Adams 14. So I'm gonna let them come up and recognize the teachers that they've been working with. So Eileen Harder and Cheryl Green.
All right, good evening, Ms. Quintana, esteemed members of the board, and Dr. Abrego. We're very excited to recognize two groups of exemplar teacher leaders. So we've been leading an ELD group and then a by-literacy group in which our educators have been making recommendations. So specifically for ELD, we've been examining our programming structures, how we can bring language to the forefront in all instruction, and also how can we effectively progress monitor our language as well. So they have done a lot of great work and will begin leading professional learning communities and during January as well, working with their teachers about best practices for English language development. So these teachers volunteer their time. They've been meeting with us once or twice a month after hours. And we definitely appreciate all the hard work that they have done.
Good evening, Board again, Ms. Quintana and Dr. Abrego. On the by-literacy end, we did the very same thing. We had teachers that were participating in a book study for Teaching for By-Literacy by Cheryl Uro and Karen Beeman. And they collaboratively, collaboratively put together three different options and frameworks for teaching and instructing in the classroom. And not only did they do that and grapple with the difficult issues that we've had with by-literacy programming, they also did it in, with style and in a culturally responsive manner. So with their expertise and their powerful voices in the room, I have full faith that they're gonna take us to the next steps of that programming, which will be to tackle assessment, planning, and implementation. So we wanna thank all of our teachers tonight. Many of them unfortunately couldn't make it from the by-literacy group. They're probably asleep in bed right now. But we would wanna welcome specifically Ms. Liseth Moreno, who's here with us tonight from Kemp, so.
And all our ELD leadership members were able to make it tonight. So if you would like to come up as well?
Please, let's have some words.
We're gonna read out the names. Liseth was one that could make it tonight. We had Kate Nazarenas, kindergarten teacher from Alsup. Joaquin Reyes, who's second and third grade by-literacy teacher at Central. We have Yvonne Brown, kindergarten teacher at Dupont. Araceli Garcia, an instructional coach at Hanson. Liseth here. Joy Kemna, who's a third grade teacher at Monaco. Patricia Navarro, who's a first grade by-literacy teacher at Rose Hill. And Dawn Minard, who's the Principal at Alsup, has also partaken in this.
We also have Shurey right here from Kemp, Amalia from Hanson, sorry. We have Adala from Central, Tina from Monaco. We also have Stephen from Hanson, Emily from Alsup, and Gerald from Dupont as well.
Picture? Yes. You stay up here.
If you just stand in front, maybe we can stand behind them so we can all get in the picture because there's gonna be quite a few.
I would've been in the back.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have to come between you right here. Well, you know, because I'm so short.
Yes, Tanya.
This is perfect. Bless you. That was a double blessing. Good night.
Good night. Merry Christmas.
Yes, Merry Christmas. It'll be the last time we see you.
Before I move on, I think that was all our recognitions, but I don't wanna leave anyone out. Are there any more recognitions that I did not acknowledge? No? Okay, that, that was the end of our recognitions.
There are no audience comments, so we will move on to the superintendent's report. Data updates.
Thank you. On the superintendent's report, we have Ms. Jamie Ball, who's gonna come up here and give us some information or some data, data updates.
So very true.
Uh, do you wanna click her?
Good evening, Madam Chair, distinguished members of the board, and Superintendent Abrego. Tonight, I wanted to bring you just a little bit of information, kind of the progress of where we are on two of our improvement strategies, and then a little bit of data and information around a couple of our special population groups. The first, the first improvement strategy I wanna talk about is our implementation of Beyond Textbooks to give you a little idea of where we were last year and where we are this year. We have been focusing on just the accountability tracking of our teachers implementing the instructional calendars of Beyond Textbooks with Fidelity. Are they on pace with the calendars that have been provided to them? And 90% of the classroom visits that we've conducted through this first semester, the teachers have been right on pace with the calendar. And so that's some really great news that, that the teachers are embracing it. If we look also at our assessment system, illuminate is what we use to house our assessments. Last year, at this time, was just the beginning of the implementation of teachers being able to use the assessments. This chart right here breaks down how many students were actually assessed last year, which is the blue, compared to the, to the students who are assessed this year in the orange. And if you can see, in the quarter, first quarter of last year, we only had five students assessed because it was, I think those were samples. But this year, we had 404 students that were being assessed within the system, which is much improvement. Thus far through second quarter, again, we still have some time and the major assessments come. That last week, we are here in December, so we expect quite an increase in that number for quarter two. But again, we are ahead of where we were last year with actually using the system. And so we are very excited to see that both the assessment and the instructional calendar are being implemented. The next improvement strategy I wanna talk about is our focus on early literacy. We have partnered with School Cubes to come in and support us through just the early literacy programming. And the systems and structures a school needs to be able to have effective programming. What Schools Cubed has done is they've really identified the indicators of quality literacy programming. They are supporting our, each one of our elementary schools. They use what we call the LET tool, the Literacy Evaluation Tool. And they evaluate where each of our schools is at in the indicators. And I'll be able to give you a little of that information today. It's focused on increasing literacy achievement. In order to increase the literacy achievement in our elementary schools, we have to have the infrastructure that enables us to support those sustainable improvements, which means we need capable school leadership. We need schedules within the school that support the effective use of our human resources. We have to have curriculum leaders that understand literacy instruction. We also have to have a systemized format for analyzing data, materials that support standards and early literacy development, and assessments that are ensuring that our students are making gains. These are all the key indicators of what quality programming looks like. Schools Cubed began in July, working with our district. They first started off with providing professional development to district leaders and our principals, assistant principals, and our instructional coaches. The topics were on how children learn how to read and best universal instruction. They started the actual school visits in September and they've completed nearly 600 observations of elementary classrooms thus far this year. They use a literacy evaluation tool that looks like this as they go through each of their observations and work with our schools. And it's comprised of the criteria I just spoke about. The literacy evaluation tool is based on the latest reading research. It's research of highly effective schools and the theory behind quality practices for highly effective learning. The literacy evaluation tool measures effectiveness of universal instruction, intervention, assessment, school, leadership team, professional development, and database decision-making. It was written by Patty Montgomery, who is one of the consultants. She's the lead consultant that's working with us. The universal instruction is the most critical area in literacy. For highly effective schools, they normally range between eighty and ninety-five percent in this category. This indicates the type of instruction that students, um, are receiving in their general ed classroom. It ensures that students are not falling back. At the beginning of our year, when we had our audit, Adams fourteen elementary schools had an average score of eighteen in this category. When we looked in the intervention section, interventions are what students, um, must receive, um, to close the instructional gaps. Highly effective school score between eighty and ninety-five percent in this category. This indicates the type of instruction that students, um, are receiving in their general ed classroom. It ensures that students are not falling back. At the beginning of our year, when we had our audit, Adams fourteen elementary schools had an average score of eighteen in this category. When we looked in the intervention section, interventions are what students, um, must receive, um, to close the instructional gaps. Highly effective school score between eighty and ninety-five percent in this category. Um, again, by law, all students on a read plan are required to receive some type of literacy intervention. At the beginning of our school year, Adams fourteen elementary schools had an average of twenty percent. Assessments, um, quality assessments ensure that our teachers can teach exactly what a student needs. Um, they let teachers know that students are progressing. The district has created a system for the schools, and currently, Adam, or at the beginning of the year, Adams fourteen elementary schools had an average score of forty-three percent. School leadership teams. The school leadership team would consist of your principal, your assistant principal, your instructional coach. And they ensure that schools have a collaborative culture. Um, the collaborative culture ensures that teachers have a voice in decision-making. It ensures that there's not a top-down approach to decision-making, and it creates a culture in schools where all means all, when we're talking specifically about student achievement. At the beginning of the school year, Adams fourteen elementary schools had an average score of fourteen percent. In professional development, um, it's provided to ensure, uh, that teachers are learning from others. It should also assure that teachers are becoming better teachers. The professional development is attained when teachers, instructional coaches, and school leaders are all working together around the data. At the beginning of the year, Adams Elementary had an average score of twenty-three percent in this category. Data-based decision-making, um, helps teachers differentiate their instruction, so students receive, um, instruction based on their individual need. It ensures that students receive a multi-tiered system of support, and it helps them make adequate progress. At the beginning of our year, we had an average score of thirty-two percent in this category. When I come back in January to speak with you around our middle-of-the-year, um, data, we will have an update on the progress that's been made in each of these categories thus far. But I wanted to give you a heads-up, so you knew where we started this year, because the Schools Cube consultants have been meeting, um, monthly with our schools, and they do a two-day, um, very intense visit with the, the school leadership teams to help them develop in each of these categories, and that also provides next steps and expectations of what they should see by the next time they come visit. When we move into our special population categories, I wanted to give you a little bit of an update around what's going on with gifted and talented. I know at our last, um, data meeting that we had, there was a lot of questions around what's going on with gifted and talented, what are our numbers. Um, so in this presentation, um, as of October two thousand and eighteen, in our official October account, we have three hundred and twenty-seven students total in, um, our district. And then I've also provided you in the chart, each school and each grade level, so that you have an understanding of where these, these kids are at. We just completed our assessment for gifted and talented identification that occurred in November. If we look at this first chart, um, it breaks down the percentile rank of where our students, um, are falling. We have seventy students in second grade who fell between the seventy-sixth and the ninety-ninth percentile. Um, and the next steps, um, for the GT Coordinator, is she, uh, individually looks up the students that are between the eighty-fifth and the ninety-ninth percentile to gather additional data. Generally speaking, to be identified as gifted and talented, you need three, uh, data points that are within the ninety-five, ninety-fifth percentile or har, higher, to be identified as GT. Oftentimes, we have team meetings where we go through the identification process. If they aren't identified for gifted and talented, we often provide them additional services through the talent pool, um, identification. So even if they aren't quite into that category, we still provide services. When we look at the sixth grade results again, um, we had another seventy students that fell within that rating, where she will be looking at those individual students for gifted and talented identification. There is, and she wanted, uh, our gifted and talented coordinator wanted me to let you know that we, um, are having a parent advisory for gifted and talented, and it is on December nineteenth. There's two different sessions. Um, one is at one o'clock, and the other is at six-thirty. So if you, um, are interested in seeing the, uh, the work that she is doing, I welcome you to attend either of those meetings. And then the last, um, sub-population I wanna talk about was the work that's being done in our ELD and our biliteracy, um, departments, and I know they spoke of it as they were presenting their awards. Um, but just another breakdown, the ELD teacher leadership develop, they're in the process of developing framework requirements for systematic ELD, and what instruction should look like consistently across K-five classrooms in the district. The high school and middle school ELD teachers are collaborating, um, on the implementation of curriculum and instructional strategies. The biliteracy teacher leadership, they have identified three models of choice for the schools. They are working to identify assessments for each of the models. They're working on allocating instructional time for the new superkids curriculum, and all biliteracy teachers have met to provide their feedback on the work that has been completed thus far. If we, and it looks like, I might've missed a slide somehow, but in the, the next slide, the implementation of constructing meaning and systematic ELD, um, our CLD department is conducting, uh, observations as well. This is just a sampling of one of the indicators that they are collecting data around, but they're trying to identify in specific areas, um, this one's specific to our teachers using and implementing constructing meaning and systematic ELD, is that is a training that we use across the district. And, um, our data is showing that the professional development that we are providing is also transferring into the classroom. Any questions? Any questions?
Thank you for that presentation, Jamie.
You're welcome.
Ms. Ball. Uh, my first question would be, I believe, is probably the second or third slide, the ten percent of the students, or I believe, there's one to three days behind, and one is four to five days, and over five days behind.
That's correct.
Um, what are we doing to catch those students in that, that number up, that total, that's behind that ten percent? 'Cause you didn't give us a total.
Correct. And I'm gonna go just from recall. Um, I, I believe it's only like two classrooms were that far behind, but I would have to reach out and, and talk to the BT Coordinator on the next steps for that. But I can have her report back to you.
When you say behind, is that the five days, over five days?
The two percent is over the five days behind, and eight percent are either one to three days behind the instructional calendar.
You want me to try to clarify, sometimes when I believe teachers are teaching a lesson, uh, they're given like maybe, cover this lesson in eight days. My students might have a little bit of problems, so teachers are allowed to go like one or two or three days extra if they need to. They just can't go too long, so sometimes that is the reason that they're doing that.
But it's, I, I know from our data that's collected, it's, it's very few, and I think right now we have about a hundred observations, so.
And explain, eliminate the system usage for that.
The what?
Illuminate.
The illuminate system? It is, um, it, it, what we call a data warehouse system, and, um, that's where we have all of the, um, Beyond Textbooks assessments. So, at the end of a teaching, um, when they focus on a sta, I hope, and, correct me if I'm wrong, um, they teach a stand for X number of days. At the end of that, they take a quick little five-question assessment, um, and then they can scan it through the system to get immediate feedback. It also provides the data in different ways, um, for, for teachers to be able to use it during their PLC or data team meeting times. And then at the end of each quarter, there is a more comprehensive, um, assessment of all of the standards that have been covered for the whole quarter. Um, so the students, they can either take it in the actual, on the computer, or you can print the assessment. They can take it on paper and then scan their answers in, but the answers go into the system so that we can track who's taking assessments, who's not. Um, I know that our numbers in quarter two are down a little bit, and so I know that our BT Coordinator has made school visits to look into why the numbers aren't as high as they need to be, and I know that some of the teachers are doing their little quick checks, just in their classroom and not uploading it, and so we, we are working on making sure that they have the training that they need, if that was one of the barriers, um, or know that that's an expectation.
And my next question is, with the data, when we, uh, since the CDE gave us this order, but last year, we had to have first quarter, second quarter, third quarter, and the data in.
Correct.
How come the board haven't seen the first quarter, the second quarter, and why we have to wait till January?
So in the actual progress monitoring tool, you have beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year, because that's the cycle we have for what we consider our benchmark assessment, so our DIBELS data, our STARS data, um, our semester assessments, that hasn't occurred yet. And so in January, you'll be receiving that information, because, um, that last week of December is when all that kinda comes to a completion, so we'll take the first week of January to look through that. I'll update the tracker. We'll do our general walkthrough, but the whole tracker will be updated for you to look at.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's all we have for the report. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ball.
Moving on to routine items. Personnel. May I have a motion? One point one. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I move for the approval of item one point one.
May I have a second?
Madam Chair, second item one point one.
Discussion?
One point oh.
CNN, Monica Roca.
Mr. Moreno.
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana.
Aye.
Mr. Rola.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Moving on to business, one point zero resolution. One point one, Superintendent's Recommendation, Resolution Number Eighteen dash zero one eight, Certification of Amounts to be Raised for Ta, From Tax Levies for Twenty-Nineteen. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move for the approval of Resolution Eighteen dash zero one eight.
May I have a second?
Madam Chair, approve Resolution Number Eighteen dash zero one eight, second.
Uh, discussion, please. CNN, roll call, Monica.
Mr. Moreno.
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana.
Aye.
Mr. Rola.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Moving on to grants, two point zero. Two point one, Superintendent's Recommendation, Approval to Apply for Funding from the Colorado Department of Education's Teacher Retention Grant. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move for the approval of item two point one.
May I have a second?
Madam Chair, um, approve, second, two point one.
Discussion?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, Superintendent, that the Board of Education approved the request for teacher retention grant. Um, when, if the district receipt is hundred and twenty-five thousand, can, uh, I'd like for the board to see the layout of what the HR, or what they gonna do for teacher retention, uh, step by step, how they gonna do it. Um, I'd like to see everything for the board to understand what the hundred and twenty-five is gonna be spent on for the, uh, teacher retention.
Right, and, and I, and I think they have like five different categories. We have to narrow it down on specifically what one uses for the district, so when they make that determination, we can include the board and let you know specifically what era they're gonna target in to meet our needs.
Thank you.
Moving on to three, oh, wait. Monica, roll call.
Mr. Moreno.
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana.
Aye.
Mr. Rola.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Moving on to other, three point oh, three point one, Superintendent's Recommendation, Approval of Reallocation of Funds from Two Point Five Classified Table of Authorized Personnel to One Point Certified Full-Time Employee at Hanson Elementary School. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move for the approval of item three point one.
May I have a second?
Madam Chair, second item three point one.
Discussion? CNN, Monica, roll call.
Mr. Moreno.
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana.
Aye.
Mr. Rola.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Moving on to three point two, Superintendent's Recommendation, Approval for Travel and an Overnight Competitive Field Trip by the Adam City High School Varsity Ras Lane Team. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move for the approval of item three point two.
May I have a second?
Madam Chair, second item three point two.
Discussion?
Where's this overnight trip to?
Reno.
Yes.
Reno?
It's Reno, yes. They competed there last year also.
Roll call, Monica.
Mr. Moreno.
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana.
Aye.
Mr. Rola.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Moving on to three point three, Superintendent's Recommendation, Approval of the Twenty-Eighteen, Twenty-Nineteen School and District Unified Improvement Plans. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move for the approval of item three point three.
May I have a second?
Madam Chair, second item three point three.
Discussion? CNN, roll call, please, Monica.
Mr. Moreno.
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana.
Aye.
Mr. Rola.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Moving on to three point four, Superintendent's Recommendation, Approval to Purchase Online Registration Application Software Prime from Inf, from Infinite Campus. May I have a roll, motion?
Madam Chair, I move for the approval of item three point four.
May I have a second?
Madam Chair, second item three point four.
Discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Um, this, um, is for the young lady downstairs, correct? Superintendent, it, this for the young lady for, um, the application, I mean, for student registration, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And are we gonna have, um, someone to come in and help teach the, um, staff how to do the registration for the different schools? How is that gonna work?
You're, you're talking about training, trained individuals?
That is correct.
Yes, we usually do that at the beginning of the year. The only difference would be is, uh, instead of being the paper, we're gonna convert it.
Correct, but I'm talking about the software. I don't see, is it gonna be any professional development for staff in this, once we get it, Mr. Chaco?
I can help you with that.
Thank you.
So as part of the contract, I don't have the ex, exact hours, but on the contract that's attached to the recommendation, there is, uh, I believe it's eight hours of professional development, and then there's also implementation training to make sure that we have it set up prior to that. Um, we are planning to train all registrars as part of the kindergarten roundup that's coming up. We haven't set the exact date, but it's, we're looking at the end of February, early March, and then that'll lead us into registration moving into next year. So really, ideally, registration will occur before the summary of it happens, and before back to school and all those pieces, so we can better identify students that are returning to our district. So, there's that plan for it, we just need to get it turned on and start playing with it and looking through it.
Is, is it different from, much different from the current infinite campus?
It's, it's actually infinite campus, only.
Just upgraded.
Yeah, the piece of it that is, we can now push it out to parents and say, here's your enrollment information, here's the. your enrollment information, here's the media disclosure release, and they can electronically sign like many of us do now if we get a loan document online or any of those pieces. So now we can actually go through the e-signature in terms of handbooks and all those pieces instead of doing all the paper copies and trying to keep track of them manually. They'll now be in the system once we get that. The registrar at each school will actually have the ability to look at each file and approve it, or if they've missed something, make sure that they communicate to parents. So it really eliminates a lot of that paper handoff, that inputting and all that paperwork that traditionally happened in the schools.
So, I'm trying to think, I know visiting the schools during registration is a lot.
Yeah.
It's going to be a lot, so I'm just asking, the different schools that got the hard copies, the papers on file now, what are we going to do with those?
So as part of the registration process and the registrar process with, I believe you stopped and talked to her earlier on Friday. So as you, as she explained some of that process, what happens is we traditionally get what's called the Q file or the student files. So every year, we scan those in anyway, so it's a lot of input on, in terms of physically having to go in there and upload documents and files and that, and it's a lot of hand intervention in that sense. What happens with this is because it's electronic, if they electronically sign and receive a copy of that, it's already in the system. We don't have someone who has to take the file from a parent, put it in a file for a student, and then upload and scan it into Infinite Campus, it eliminates that process.
Can, can we get ahead of, ahead of the game or so much and put it in the flyer and let parents know what's coming, let the staff know what's coming, let, you know?
We, we absolutely can. The real thing is, I don't want to put anything in flyer until we've actually had a chance to get in there and look at it. So this is that first step of getting it approved and getting it online so that we, we as a department can sit down, look at what forms we need there, make sure we have everybody's collaboration in terms of if there's a health release or any of those other releases that we need in there. Make sure that looks good, and then our first real, you know, training process pushout is with kindergarten roundup, which is a much smaller population of students, and so we could then work out our bugs before we move it out to the larger, whole district.
Okay.
Process. So that plan will happen, we just need to actually physically get our hands on it before we can start.
Okay.
Putting too much out.
And once this is approved tonight, how soon will y'all get y'all hands on it?
So I believe, I can't answer that exactly because it's, we have everything in there in terms of the purchasing piece of it, so whatever it takes to get the money to them and for them to make it active. It's really just adding that additional piece and making sure it's part of our components.
Can, Mr. Chakal, can you keep the Board updated on when y'all get it and, you know, give us, can you give us a presentation of how it's going to work?
Absolutely, as soon as I have a chance to get in there and look at it, I can.
Well, thank you.
Help that for you.
Appreciate it, thank you so much.
Moving on, oh, roll call, Monica.
Mr. Moreno?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on to three point five, superintendent's recommendation, approval to purchase resources from Zainer Blosser for English language instruction in the biliteracy classrooms. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move for the approval of item three point five.
May I have a second?
Madam Chair, I second item three point five.
Discussion? CNN, Monica Roca.
Mr. Moreno?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on to three point six, superintendent's recommendation, approval to travel out of state to attend the American School Counselors Association Annual Conference in Boston on June twenty-ninth through July second, 2019. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move for the approval of item three point six.
May I have a second?
Madam Chair, I second item three point six.
Any discussion? CNN, Monica Roca.
Mr. Moreno?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on to three point seven, superintendent's recommendation, approval to extend current contract and increase funds for the Arter Health Care for the professional services of a licensed speech and a licensed pathology assistant. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move for the approval of item three point seven.
May I have a second?
Madam Chair, I second item three point seven.
Any discussion? CNN, Monica Roca.
Mr. Moreno?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on to three point eight, superintendent's recommendation, approval to purchase transportation radios and service from radio source, resource incorporate. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move for the approval of item three point eight.
May I have a second?
Madam Chair, I second item three point eight.
Any discussion? CNN, Monica Roca.
Mr. Moreno?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on to four, item communications, that, anybody have any communications? Mr. Moreno?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Did you want to say, we just?
Superintendent's report first.
No, I was just going to update you on the wrestling team.
Okay.
They competed against five other schools. They were able to be victorious. Their record was four and one, so that means they won four times against schools and only lost once. We also had our trillions competing on a statewide level, and they did a really nice job. They did, again, make it all the way to the finals from, like they did last year. I believe they placed.
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth, and they had, they were doing very well and they just had one little mishap, but besides that, we're very proud of them.
Just like to say, I attended the Casby Convention, and it's amazing to see what the future holds for public schools. And I don't know, maybe I ought to look at, since we're getting also built here in a year or so, but they're coming out and saying that the main center attention of elementaries is going to be the phys ed room or phys ed gym. And they're saying that eventually all rooms will be built around the gym and people will be able to, classrooms will just be able to walk in. So they're saying that phys ed eventually is going to play a big part in public education in the future, so that was pretty interesting. Another one, as I was mentioned earlier, was a program that was set up to help athletes maintain their academics or their eligibility. We talked to one, the school presented their program, it went from seventy-six kids that were ineligible down to twelve. This is something, as I talked to some of the coaches at that, at the high school, this is one of the problems that they're facing a lot, is eligibility. So it was a good conference. We learned a lot of good things there and so, that there. Then the other thing, just like to say, like to pay tribute to John, and I'm going to mess up your name, Mr. Pointon, for his communication and organizing the community for this, through the troubles that we're going to and through the partnership that we're going to develop and, yeah, the community meetings there, and I attended the first one, and there's a good group of people of all, from the whole part of the community that was there. Didn't attend Saturdays, but my understanding was a good job there Saturday, so hopefully we'll see you there on tomorrow. My last thing, I'm really full today, is a month or two ago, I made a recommendation that we begin to meet at various schools starting the second semester. I talked to some people, individuals, and they felt that was a good idea. And as I talked to Mr. Pointon there and his group, sometimes we don't see the people that we need to see here because they don't have no correlation or no real reason to come here, but if it was at their school, I think we would be able to see some, some other students. So I would like to recommend that the second meeting of the month that we go to visit one of the schools. An example would be, we could visit Adam City High School in Hanson. We would serve the Adam City High School in Hanson parents. Also up in Adam City Middle, Kearney and Rose Hill. So this would give those parents a chance to come out and voice their opinion. I think the problem that I have heard at CDE or the school board, the state school board, is that we have lost trust with our community, and that's something that Mr. Pointon is working on, him and Mr. Tipton's there are working on, he's getting, and they're doing a good job by bringing out, I put, the first one was close to two hundred people there, the Saturday was, there's seventy people there. I think we've got to keep it on to get the trust of these people, and we can get them back and, so that's, I would like to find out if we can have a consensus. Do we want to do that, so that way we can have the people being set up and what school?
I think we discussed that a couple of years back, if you remember, to move it to one of the meetings a month to the schools, and I do think that's a good idea. And instead of talking about it, I think we need to move on it and make sure, I'm sure that schools will approve it, but I think, because we have discussed this before, we need to do something with it. Do we have a consensus on that?
Yes.
Mr. Moreno?
So who could we appoint to superintendent? Point the superintendent?
We can always, call the schools, organize the schools and see if we can get them to hostess.
Go ahead, Mr. Milner.
On the resolution for the tax levies, there is a typo up in the whereas for the bonds, two thousand and nineteen, it says eight point eight three seven, and towards the bottom, it says eight point eight zero seven, so we just need to correct the eight point eight three seven as it was.
It should be three seven?
Correct.
Should be that.
Correct. It's before the turn. Should be twenty eighteen, eight point eight three seven?
Should I move a technical correction to the resolution then?
You can do it.
That's fine, but what you need to do is, since this is an important resolution.
Yeah. All right, you want to do that?
Move for the readoption of resolution eighteen dash zero one eight with a technical correction on the bond redemption fund mill levy to read eight point eight three seven.
At the top, did you do the twenty eighteen? Up here. The very top, it should say twenty eighteen.
And a correction on the date in the first line to read certification of amounts to be raised from tax levies for twenty eighteen.
Where?
The date's fine, right?
That's not an issue.
So, where is it? It's for twenty nineteen, right? I withdraw that second.
Is it twenty?
Recommendation.
Twenty nineteen. Okay, so.
I, thank you, Madam Chair. I move for the readoption of resolution number eighteen dash zero one eight with the technical correction to the bond redemption fund mill levy to read eight point eight three seven.
That is really strange. Okay. Anybody else, harvest?
You need a second.
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 Roll call, Monica.
Mr. Moreno?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Forget it.
Can, can I get clarification on the meetings at schools? Are we looking at having every meeting at schools?
No, just one a month.
Which one?
The second, I think we came with a consensus, was the second one of the month. You're welcome. Meeting adjourned at, I'm going to do that one seven fifty-five.